Please take a roll call. The Vice Mayor is not here today, but everyone else is in attendance, so a silent roll call. And Steve Feld, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for those who don't know, Steve Feld is the Executive Director of the Carefree Cave Creek Chamber of Commerce. First item up today is the Consent Agenda. All items listed here under are considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member saw requests, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be discussed separately. Item number one, approval of the September 2nd, 2025 Town Council Regular Meeting Minutes. Item two, approval of check register report, September 2025. Item three, proclamation of extra mile day, November 1st, 2025. Item four, request for approval of a temporary street closure for Easy Street from Ho-Hum Drive to Sundial Circle in a portion of Ho-Hum Road Drive on February, October 17th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the YMCA Annual Trunk or Treat. Item number five, approval of purchase of Stryker Medical Equipment Lucas for the Carefree Fire Department at the one-time cost of $22,161.41 from the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract Government Rate. The Lund University Cardio-Pulmonary Assist System is a mechanical device that delivers consistent chest compression to cardiac arrest patients, commonly used in emergency and transport settings as an alternative to manual CPR. Item six, approval of combined trial balance, July 2025. And item seven, request for approval of a temporary street closure for section of Ho-Hum Drive behind the Sanders Lincoln Pavilion on Friday, October 24th, from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the Friday Carefree Farmers Market and Glass Pumpkin Patch. Does anyone have any items they would like to pull from the Consent Agenda?
I would like to pull number five.
Okay, item number five. Anyone else have an item they wish to pull? So hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve items one through four, six and seven.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda, one through four and six and seven.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passaged unanimously. Okay, item number five.
Yeah, I just have a few questions on this new machine. So, the machine's gonna do CPR, so then the fireman doesn't need to. So, it's not, I'm assuming, replacing a fireman, it's just an added piece of equipment, which $22,000 or whatever is, is pretty expensive. So, couple of questions, what's the lifespan of the machine? And I could see in a small town, where maybe you have limited resources, that this machine would come in handy, but if, is the intent to use the machine, and then the fireman, what's he doing in lieu of that? So, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, I understand they're kind of the new thing and they're going around everywhere, but I'm trying to see what the, kind of, the long-term benefit financially is in, for this, if you can answer that.
So Chief Tally.
Mayor, Council. So, on this device, where we're going with CPR medically is continuous reps. Don't break that cycle, keep the pump filled, and that keeps the blood flowing. As first responders doing mechanical CPR, we're trying to juggle the patient, moving them in and out of the ambulance, we get tired, long transports to the hospital. This device, we apply it before they ever make the stretcher, and then it's continuous CPR all the way to the hospital. That keeps the pump going, the blood flowing, better chances of survival rate.
Okay, so it's, it's an addition, and I, I understand that logic. What is supposed to be, because I know they're new, the lifespan, maintenance for these?
I don't have the exact data on that, I'd be more than happy to research it and get it to. Chief Sayaki, who's not here tonight, he's the one who did all the research and has all the information on it, but I can get that to you probably tomorrow.
Any other questions on item number five? I think it's a great addition, and you hit it right on the nail on the head, because even when the firemen apply the CPR, they get tired, you have to hand off, and there's a break in that rhythm, and it's to the detriment of the patient.
Yeah, and there's, unfortunately, there are outcomes where it's not good because of certain circumstances, where we just can't give the patient what they need in that, in that instance, so this device changes that for us.
Quick question, I'm just thinking about it, if something goes wrong with the machine, is it set where, like, you're doing something else, the machine does it, there's additional liability if there's a problem, or it really is being done with the assistance of the fireman? I mean, I'm just kind of curious.
So, in the event there's a machine failure, part of the training is what do we do in that instance? And then we simply take the machine out of the process and insert us, and there's a little delay, but there's a lot of delays otherwise, so. And that also, that one person who's not doing CPR, it allows us to give better patient care through IV management, drug administration, it just, enhances the, the whole scenario altogether.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve Agenda, or Consent Agenda, item number five.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda, item number five.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passaged unanimously, thank you. Okay, Agenda item number eight, Current Events. So, we have community conversations, so on February, sorry, on Friday, Friday, October 8th, actually, it's the 10th, Friday, October 10th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the Pavilion. So, the Vice Mayor and Sheila Amorosa will join me. So, it's Friday, October 10th, 9:00 to 11:00. And then, we have another open house scheduled for exploring repurposing the Town Hall property, and that'll be on November 6th. So, please watch for that, and we'll publish the times and all the details. Coffee with a Cop, we're gonna do that again, so it was about six months ago, we try to do it every six months, spring and fall. And so, on Thursday, November 13th, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at Black Mountain Coffee Shop. So, we'll have Captain Aliterno and a lot of his deputies will be there, and it's a great time to ask questions and learn something, they're great. They're very open, and it's always a good discussion. Maricopa County Environmental Services Department comes around, they inspect our splash pad, right, they check for the quality of the water. So, when they're inspecting, they notice that there's dogs and sometimes people in our pools, right, around the sundial. So, how do we manage that? Well, the way we manage it, and the way they want us to manage it, is to put up some signs that say, like, no swimming, or something to that effect. So, you'll see those signs soon, and that's why we're putting them up. The alternative is to have water there that's swimming pool quality, a lifeguard, and God knows what. So, this is, this is an easy answer, and we need to do, we need to comply with what they're asking us to do. If you look at October, we have a lot of pretty cool events coming up, and they're all on our website, but we have Art Night coming up on the 3rd, Thursday, October 16th, from 4:00 to 7:00. We're partnering with the YMCA for a trunk or treat on Easy Street on Friday, October 17th. We have a glass pumpkin patch coming into Sanders and Lincoln on Friday, October 24th through the 26th. That's Greg Toome. So, you may remember, if you were here during the, the pumpkin festivals that we had, there was a gentleman who was making glass pumpkins, this is him, they're, they're fantastic. And then, for communities on the east side, Carefree Rolling Hills and Carefree Shadows, we're gonna begin the mill and overlay project. So, the streets will be mill and overlay maintained, that begins on October 13th, probably runs for about a month. So, they'll be talking with the HOAs, they'll be having door hangers and letting people know what's going on. So, those two communities will be involved with that. And I think Lon has a comment about the Orphan and Oddballs Car Show.
Yes, I do. I know that P&amp;Z Commissioner Hardy and I were out, along with Clint, this past weekend in Cave Creek, handing out flyers and getting a lot of interest. So, November 16th, 9:00 to 1:00 o'clock, we're gonna be in the downtown area with our Orphans and Oddballs show, we're getting a lot of interest. So, we're gonna be asking for some volunteers to help us out directing traffic, directing the cars in there, and I think it should be a great event. I know Clint, you, you were down there as well, we got some great pictures.
Well, I'm looking forward to the event. I like a little cup of coffee and looking at the cars and the sun up my back, I think it'll be a great day. I'll be directing parking and that sort of thing, so try to recruit my son and a few others to do this. Les is pretty, has history with this, he put on the Wheels and Wings event a couple years ago, and it was quite a show.
Yeah, Les has been a big help to us, he's used his mailing lists, our mailing lists, so I think it's gonna be a great event, I think this'll be the first of many, so I'm, I'm excited about it, so wanted to let everyone know, thank you.
Yeah, sounds good. So, that'll close Current Events, if no one else has any other comments. So, before we get to the next Agenda item, just wanted to be clarifying of two speaking slips that I have. So, John Mattis, which topic would you like to talk on?
Agenda item eight.
I know what it says, but Agenda item eight is current events, so you wish to talk about maybe the election?
Marking the new voting.
The voting?
Political science.
Political science, okay, that's cool. And John Traynor?
Yeah, I think the agenda change between the--
Yes, yeah, that's fine.
So, political science as well.
Perfect, okay, we'll take care of you, thanks. Okay, item number nine, MAG, Pima Road Corridor Study Update. So, what this is about, we've had discussions regarding the Pima Road improvements, so from the Cave Creek Road intersection down to Stagecoach, that's what belongs to, we're responsible for in Carefree. And the study that has been underway, that is, I believe has been wrapped up, was funded and conducted through Maricopa Association of Governments, MAG. And so, we have folks here for MAG tonight. Now, just like, just a little bit of background on MAG. So, MAG is what's called the Municipal Planning Organization. So, what that means is, they filter funds, either from the feds, or maybe the county or the state, to the municipalities within Maricopa County. So, our history with MAG, right, what have we, as Carefree, what have we benefited from? Well, we've gotten a street sweeper, we've gotten bike lanes, we've gotten the EV charger study that we did, and we've gotten this study here for the Pima Road improvements. And they do a lot of work above and beyond that. So, they're involved primarily with transportation, but also economic, or environmental quality, and with some human services. But we talk about transportation, we're talking about roads that we all drive on, right? When you take the 51 to the airport, or the 101, or if you go to the west side, the 303 or 202, all of these transportation things is a big part of what they're involved with. So, that's, that's who they are, they're important to us, they're kind of under the radar, we throw around the name MAG, and we assume everyone knows what it is, that they help us out a lot, and I can tell you, as a mayor, they're great to work with. And not only that, not only do they give out money, they're, they're a great source of data and information. So, Steve Proppa, for example, Economic Development, he can dive into that and learn things, and they can regionalize that information for us. So, tonight, we have Tim Stroh, he's the major projects manager, he's a major projects manager at MAG, and he's gonna talk about the study. But first, we also have with us tonight the Executive Director, Ed Zuckerman. So, Ed has been the Executive Director for MAG for about two and a half years. So, in those two and a half years, some pretty cool things have happened. One, they passed Proposition 479, which is the half-cent sales tax. So, he managed that through the state legislature, through the governor, to the public, and the public, voters of Maricopa County approved it. And that's, will allow us, as a community, as a, as a county, to continue for the next 20 years to have road improvements, right, to maintain what we have and make new improvements. It's really important. So, he shepherded that through, and he's managed some environmental pushback from the EPA, which would have been basically horrific for, for the county. So, it has to do with ozone levels and making those levels reasonable, determining the sources of that ozone, whether it comes internationally or from within the county. So, he's shepherded that through. So, Ed, why don't you come on up and, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor Crane, very much. It's an honor to be here with you all in Carefree. As the mayor said, my name's Ed Zuckerman, I'm the Executive Director of the Maricopa Association of Governments, known as MAG. We are a membership organization of 32-member agencies, that is, all the cities and towns in Maricopa County, plus Maricopa County itself, Florence and Maricopa in Penal County, plus Penal County itself, and then our three native tribal nations here as well. That's the 32. So, Mayor Crane, I want to say thank you to you, you've been a wonderful participant and supporter of MAG. Mayor Crane represents Carefree on that board every fourth Wednesday of the month. The mayors of those agencies I mentioned, or the supervisor chairman, or the tribal presidents, gather, and they work on these issues that he just described, in transportation, air quality, and human services. And so, Mayor Crane, although Carefree is one of our smaller member agencies, he has one vote at the board, the same as the mayor of Phoenix does, and that's how MAG works, we work through consensus, and we work through collaboration. And Mayor Crane has been a very faithful attender and participant in that. And one of the, one of the wonderful things that I got to do here as the Executive Director was to go and visit all these 32-member agencies. And I remember coming up here to the, to the town, and sitting down with the mayor and with Gary, and saying, what, what, what can MAG do for you? And he said, if we've got this issue, we got Pima Road, we gotta figure out what to do with Pima Road. And so, I went back to my team, and one of them's here, Patrick Stone is here, as well as Tim, who you'll see in a minute, said, what can we do to help Carefree figure out Pima Road? And I said, oh, we've got, we've got money to do things like that, oh, fantastic. So, that's the result of what you're going to see tonight, it actually started from a conversation the mayor and I had a couple of years ago. So, the, the entire study is paid for by MAG, and it is presented here for you tonight for your consideration and, and feedback. Tim is our major projects manager, he's probably one of our best project managers, most seasoned experience, he's done a lot of these, so you're getting the very best we have to offer in terms of our staffing for you on this. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tim, and we'll welcome your comments and conversation as we go through this. But thank you again.
Thank you, Ed.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, thanks for having me back again. Good evening, council members. As Ed stated, I am also joined tonight by Patrick Stone in the corner over there, he's one of our deputy transportation directors, and also Zach Handy, who is part of the Kimley Horan team that helped manage this study. So, about a year ago, tell me if I'm too loud, if this is in my--
No, you're fine.
Okay. So, I presented this council about a year ago, and we just kicked this study off, it was very early on, and since that time, we've conducted two public meetings for this study, and we have completed our alternatives analysis, as the mayor stated. Before I jump in the alternatives analysis, I want to refresh everybody in the audience and in the, at the council about what this study is and isn't. The study corridor, as you see outlined by the red and the orange, is the study corridor. It's about 4.1 miles long, starts at Los Piedras and ends at Cave Creek Road intersection. This is the last section of Pima Road that has not been updated or new improvements made to it, or is, is under study at this time. So, this is one of the final segments of the Pima Road corridor before it dovetails into your community. We do anticipate a significant amount of growth in this corridor, as I stated the first time I presented this council. The green section highlighted on the map, that is state land that still needs to go to auction. It's about 4,000 acres, and we anticipate about 5,000 homes being built in the future, which will add a significant amount of traffic to Pima Road. And last, another driving factor of this is the town of Carefree and the city of Scottsdale both have MAG arterial life cycle funding programmed for this section of Pima Road. And as Mayor Crane stated earlier, Prop 400 is coming to an end with the passage of Prop 479, so we need to be able to program improvements for this section of, of Pima Road and move it forward. So, this study looked at road widening, as you know, this section of Pima Road is one lane each direction today. We looked at signalized intersections, turning them into roundabouts, looked at access management issues, looked at adding bike lanes and sidewalks and unpaved trails. As I just stated, this is the last section of Pima Road to be updated. The vision for the corridor is it'll be six lanes with a raised median down by the Loop 101, which makes a lot of sense, that area sees the highest number of average daily trips in a, in a period of time. And then, as you go north, it goes from six lanes down to four lanes, and like I said, we're gonna show you our ultimate vision for this quarter, which, surprise, it's gonna be four-lane cross-sections. So, that's the vision for the corridor, six lanes and four lanes all the way up to Cave Creek Road. So, this is the list of the 10 intersections we analyzed as part of this study, the ones highlighted, Lone Mountain, Westland Road, Stagecoach, and Cave Creek. We analyzed those for improvements such as signalized intersections or roundabouts. The other intersections, we looked at those for access onto the main road as traffic increases, and we made some recommendations for some spot improvements. Safety is always a focus for MAG, and I know it is for the town of Carefree. As I stated before in the past, this section of corridor had over 70 crashes in a five-year period, 40 of those happened between Stagecoach Pass and Cave Creek Road. This corridor has challenges, it has, you know, when I was driving up here this evening, speed limit goes from 50 miles an hour to 35 miles per hour. And you think about, folks, traffic does drop off as you go to the north, but you have stop-controlled intersection at Cave Creek Road, and you have people speeding through this area, that creates some challenges. So, and unfortunately, we did have a fatality at Cave Creek Road Pima intersection, so one of our focuses for this study was, how do we make this intersection more safe for the community? So, currently, this is a map of our existing levels of service, the corridor's actually operating pretty, pretty good, to say the least. Most of the corridor's level service C, a little bit of congestion, but operates just fine. Down by, the further down by Los Piedras, it's a level service D, a little bit more If we do nothing to this corridor, and all the growth happens, in the year 2035, you see on this map, the entire corridor is red, level service F. Things are not moving very well along the corridor, you have backups at the intersections and unsafe conditions. By 2050, that trend continues, still level service F. So, this is like one of the reasons why we are doing this study, to make sure we can recommend improvements, we can carry forward to make travel safe and efficient through the area. We held our first public meeting, actually, in this room on November 11th, had a pretty good turnout, about 50 residents. We had them provide comments through an online survey, we also rolled out maps for them to put their comments on the corridor. We don't live up here, I don't live up here necessarily, so it was really important for us to sit down, talk to the residents in the community, and see what they have to say. They drive these roads every single day, so we wanted to hear what they thought would be some good transportation improvements, and what are some of their concerns. Some of the highlights were safety at the intersections and driveways, suggested adding signals, roundabouts to slow traffic down, increasing number of lanes to manage traffic, and comments about managing the impact of new residential developments, ensuring careful construction phasing. We also asked the question, describe the existing corridor in one word. And the size of the word represents the frequency of the comments. Number one is dangerous, followed by congested, busy, and loud. Next, we asked them to describe your ideal future in the corridor. Same thing, safe is repeated multiple, multiple times. We also have multi-lane, quiet, and wider. So, after this first public meeting, we got to work with the consulting team, we started diving into the alternatives analysis immediately, trying to come up with the best solution to move forward to our stakeholders. We held a public meeting at the Holland Center in Scottsdale, had 82 residents show up, we did the same type of thing, we rolled out the alternatives, provide, they provided us comments, we also had an online survey, we had 97 survey responses, which was pretty good. And we walked them through, like I said, each individual intersection recommendation for the study, and they provided a comment. So, now I'm gonna transition, we're gonna go into all terms analysis, and I'll be able to provide you with the comments of if they supported or didn't support it through the So, following the city of Scottsdale's standards for a rural minor arterial, and continuing the four-lane cross-section from Happy Valley Road, we are proposing a four-lane divided road with a shared use path, and trail on the east side of the road, and a sidewalk on the west. In addition to four lanes, two in each direction, both north and south, we also will include a bike lane. You can see the notes section on the screen, so when we propose improvements like this throughout the region, we don't have a standard uniform cross-section that we just jam into a corridor, right? There's gonna be some constraints here and there. We have the cemetery on Pima Road, right, that we'll be able to neck down this road, maybe reduce the median a little bit, take out, maybe attach the sidewalk to the main road, to make sure we don't have any impacts that are unnecessary. So, with this four-lane cross-section, the corridor operates pretty well. In 2035, as a four-lane facility, most of the corridor is level service B and C, which is fantastic. Fast forward to 2050, the entire corridor is level service C. That is a perfect situation from a transportation perspective, in my opinion. We developed two alignment alternatives for the road widening. Alternative one would center the roadway on the section line, which would distribute the widening equally to both sides of the existing roadway. This concept provides less flexibility to shift to avoid constraints in the corridor, it'd also have to shut down certain lanes during construction. Alternative two, which is our preferred alternative, would center the roadway in the existing right-of-way, which would minimize impacts to existing residential properties and allows the existing road to be utilized to the greatest extent possible during construction. The public voted 90% for alternative two and 10% for alternative one. For Pima Road and Lone Mountain Road intersection, so this is one of those intersections we looked at, this is an existing signalized intersection today, but we also wanted to look at, say, hey, can we make things better? So, we also looked at it as a roundabout. Our recommended alternative is to keep it as signalized as today. Not every intersection should be a roundabout, right? There's a time and place for it, depending on the flow of traffic and how it fits into the existing right-of-way. So, we're proposing that, 92% of the public voted in favor of the signalized intersection, 8% for the multi-lane roundabout. And I need to say, when I say the public, we, when we did the, the surveys and we met with folks, I did not ask them if they live in the town of Carefree, or if they're a resident of Scottsdale. This is a regional project, so we just were happy that they were able to show up and provide their comments. Pima Road and Westland Road intersection, again, this is an existing traffic signal, but we wanted to take a look at it, see if a roundabout provided better solution, and it did not. A signal in the 2035 and 2050 timeframe operates a level service B and C, where a roundabout would be a level service A in 2035, and a level of service F in 2050. 87% of the residents responded with, they were in favor of a signalized intersection. Pima Road, Stagecoach Pass, so this intersection is a little bit tricky, because the town's jurisdiction is just to the north of this intersection with Scottsdale. We have stop-controlled on the east-west, uncontrolled north to the south, this is a high-traffic area, there's, there's been a significant amount of wrecks, like I stated earlier. We looked at it as a signal, which should operate in 2035, level service A, 2050, level service A. Same thing with the roundabout, they're both good solutions. However, the roundabout in this intersection takes up a little bit more right-of-way, and so based on that, and stakeholder support, we recommend a signalized intersection at Stagecoach Pass. 78% of the residents were in favor of that recommendation. Pima Road, Cave Creek Road. So, four-legged intersection, stop-controlled all the way around, one of our focuses for this intersection was safety. This is the end of the line for Pima Road going to the north, like I said, we have high, high speeds, 50 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour, our goal is to slow them down, the residents coming in there, slow them down, make a safer environment. So, if it was a signalized intersection, operate level service B in 2035 and C in 2050, but a roundabout with level service A, 2035 and 2050. Roundabout in this location works really, really well. It also provides a safer option. A signal has 32 conflict points, where a roundabout has eight, so it significantly reduces opportunities for severe injury crash. for severe injury crashes. Now, I'm going to ask Gary if he can switch. As part of our recommendation, we wanted to create a video of how this roundabout would fit into the existing landscape in the town. So not everything is perfect in this video, but you get to see the four-lane concept with a raised median. We're traveling north on Pima Road, going towards the Cave Creek Road intersection. And again, when you think about this, think about traveling from Stagecoach Pass and entering into this corridor, into this roundabout, with the whole purpose of slowing folks down but keeping them moving through the intersection. Our engineers for the team from Kimbley Horn did a great job of designing this to be able to accommodate emergency service vehicles, delivery trucks, but also with all the recreational vehicles coming in from Bartlett Lake, we wanted to make sure that, as you see in the picture, people can tow boats through this intersection. So like I said, this was an example of us wanting to show, what would a roundabout look like at this location? How would it operate? So I think the consultant team did a great job of pulling this together. Thank you, Gary. So those are the recommendations for the Pima Road corridor study. Here's the cost breakdown by segment. So the total project cost is $88.7 million. Segment four, I want you to focus on, because that's where the town of Kri, it's town of Cave, or, yeah, I work all over the valley. Sometimes I mix up the towns I'm working for. Town of Carefree is included in this. So when you break down the, your jurisdiction in Scottsdale, the town of Carefree will be responsible for $10.4 million of segment four, where the city of Scottsdale will be responsible for $5.8 million. That includes the road widening and the roundabout. So the next steps for this study, we wanted to hear from this council before we finalized anything. And next week, I'm going out to the city of Scottsdale and presenting to their transportation commission to give them the recommendations as well and hear what they have to say. Once that is finalized, then we will wrap up the study based on comment from this committee and the mayor and Gary, and then we'll move forward on wrapping the study up. And before we do that, though, once we hear everybody's comments, we're going to pull together the town of Carefree and the city of Scottsdale to talk about funding, especially the ALCP, how it works, what the funding looks like, and look at the, identify the missing gaps. So we still have some work to do, but Mayor Crane, thank you for having me here tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you. Great presentation and nice job by Kimbley Horn, especially that video. It's fantastic. So one thing, you know, the, a lot of it comes down to costs. So roughly, what would be the cost sharing with MAG in the town? An estimate?
So I'm going to have Patrick come up, who's, he's the man who knows everything about the ALCP. So right now, the town of Carefree has $5.25 million inside the arterial lifecycle program. The match from the town would be $2.2 million for a total of $7.5 million.
And the project is $10 million?
So you're, the section right now correct is about $10 million. And that number could change once this project goes to design, where they're going to really fine-tune how, like, the right-of-way footprint and different operating pieces. I don't expect it to change that much, to be quite honest with you, but it could change.
Okay. So the town would be responsible for roughly $5 million in total?
That is correct.
Okay. So that's important for us to understand that.
And that's, and Patrick, feel free to...
Yeah, I'll jump in. Thank you, Mayor Crane, members of the town council. Correct. As it stands today, the regional commitment is the $5.2 million. The delta of that would be the responsibility of the towns. That being said, as Ed noted earlier, MAG's a partner with, with the town. We would be looking, and that'll come out of that, funding recommendation. I think there's opportunities to talk with the town, talk with the city. We were talking internally today. We'll find some solutions to maybe bring back to the town, see what we can do to help and assist with that. Understand, our regional commitment is always restricted to 70, the lesser of 70% of what we have programmed in our arterial lifecycle program or the total cost of the project. But I think there's opportunities to work with the town to find some solutions, once we kind of know what the recommendations are.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So council, questions?
Yeah. I'm just curious. So this is a long stretch of road, and I know Scottsdale is a much bigger city. They've got a lot of projects. They're, we're probably a little more ready than they are. Is this going to be started at Los Piedras? Could Carefree, if they were ready and had the funds and wanted to move forward, could we separate our portion and start at our end?
Mayor Crane, members of the council, that's a great question. The answer is absolutely yes. So that's one of the things we want to talk about. After I present to the city of Scottsdale, we're going to pull staff together and talk about, what are those opportunities? Would Scottsdale lead the construction and the design of the entire corridor? Would Carefree go alone on their portion and then let Scottsdale improve theirs at a later date? Those are all things still up in the air, so that was an excellent question.
Okay. And then on the video, which was great, is, I notice, and people in town are going to notice this, your roundabout, which I thought was great, didn't have a bunch of like yellow reflector bumps and stuff. So you're not recommending all of that, right?
So this was a high-level video, just that there's, we would go back and forth about the details. I'm like, hey, I want to see people walking. I want to see this. This is very high-level. It's not going to look exactly like this. There's going to be a lot of differences in it based on different standards of what needs to be included and what does not.
Okay, but we've got some flexibility.
Absolutely.
Councilman Roth?
Yeah, I was just curious. In your maps and everything, we showed starting at Dixietta and going, but the road narrows at Dynamite to single lane on either side.
Yeah, so that section is under study right now by the city of Scottsdale. So we're just starting at Los Piedras to the north.
Okay, that I was just, it was like a mystery section.
No.
And since I drive up and down that road, I was a little curious. I've got a one lane and then a two, then a one. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Comparing the signal stop and the roundabout, you said that there was eight contact points with the roundabout and...
32 for a signal.
Yeah. Can you explain what that, what that means?
Yeah, that's a great question, Mayor Crane, members of the council. So yeah, think about all the different turning movements at a traffic signal. You have the left turns, you have the through movements, you have the rights. So every time there's an opportunity for them to get in a traffic accident, that would be a conflict point. So traffic signal's 32, roundabout is eight. So roundabout, you remove the left turn movement. You remove the opportunity to have a head-on collision and other contact points. So it creates a safer traffic option.
And what's the cost difference between the two?
Mayor Crane, members of the council, it's approximately $2 million.
Hey, any questions?
So you felt that, thank you for your presentation, but you, it seemed that you feel, once we get up to the cemetery, that there is actually enough space for two lanes still?
Mayor Crane, members of the council, yes. So that's where I talked about the flexibility of the corridor. Once it goes into the design phase, the engineers will look at opportunities to, I think we were proposing a 10-foot wide median, plus or minus. We'll be able, we could take that 10 feet and shrink it down to two feet if we have to. So there's different things where we have a little bit of green space between the sidewalk and the street. We can remove that green space, slide the sidewalk over or whatnot, make more room available. So we do have the room. Yeah, we made sure to avoid that.
So you, you mentioned bike lane. So we have road bikes and then we have Sunday bicyclists. So I didn't see the lane for the roadies.
Mayor Crane, members of the council, so that's one of those challenging, this quarter, we, we were very aware that there's bike packs on the weekends. And we do propose a bike lane to the area south of the town of Carefree. As we noted in that one slide, we did have a shared use path that also went up where folks could use that as well. And that was a wide swath. So the city of Scottsdale is committed to make sure there's active transportation improvements in this corridor. It's challenging, though, because we could build a fantastic bike facility off the road, but the bikers don't want to be on there. Those packs, they want to be in the street and they want to ride hard and fast, right? So that's those challenges where I think we just need to make sure that we build the road the right way and put up a lot of signage and everybody's respectful of their own right-of-way.
So this is for discussion only. So are you looking from, for, from us for a sense of direction or, at this point? I mean, you're going to meet with the city of Scottsdale on 16th and then we're going to staff, so we'll get together after that? I mean...
Yeah. Mayor Crane, members of the council, yeah, direction would be great. So the study team is proposing a roundabout at Cave Creek Road-Pima Road intersection. We will get to a time here in the near future where we need direction from Carefree to say yes or no, or we prefer a signal.
Okay, so...
That could be after the fact or could be today.
Yeah, I view a roundabout as a very good solution, but a lot of it comes down to cost.
Understood.
But isn't a roundabout a little more expensive to put in initially, but long-term it's actually a more viable option, correct?
Mayor Crane, members of the council, that is absolutely true. There's lower maintenance for a roundabout, once you, once you put it in place.
And ultimately, that corner, which we want, is safe, right? And the roundabout ultimately is safer than the stoplight there.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I do have one additional question. So often, through the course of the year, we wrestle with the use of consultants. You know, you hired a consultant to do this. Your MAG, your business, at least from my perception, is your primary business is managing transportation. This is a transportation discussion. I don't know how big your staff is. We probably have north of 100 people at MAG. And probably maybe 50% of them are transportation people, more or less, more?
Smaller.
Smaller? Okay.
Yeah, we, we use, Mayor Crane, we have, we do a lot for not a lot of folks, to be quite honest with you. I think we're about 120 people as an agency overall. So when I'm, there's only so many project managers at MAG. I would say maybe there's less than 10 in that category as well. And yes, we rely on consultants for a lot of our work.
So it's because of capacity, internal capacity or expertise or...
Yeah, Mayor Crane, yeah, I think both, capacity but expertise. So like for Kimbley Horn on this situation, for a roadway assignment, they have, you know, drainage folks, they have environmentalists, they have road engineers, they have planners, they have communication teams, they have graphic artists. Like, I could not do this by myself. That video would take me five years to figure out how to use the software, right? Sure, I could do some of this, but also we want to make sure that we respond to our, our members' needs. And we have a lot of members and we have a lot of work to be done for Prop 479. So we, the consultant community is a great partner of ours and we use them a lot.
Thanks for the explanation. Any other comments before we wrap this one up? We have no public comment today on this subject. So Tim, thank you very much for coming up here. We look forward to the outcomes of the, was it the October 16th discussions?
Yes.
And then moving on with the next phases of this and how it moves forward. And Patrick, we're looking forward to you coming up with some more money for us.
No pressure.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Mayor Crane. Thank you, members of the council, for having me here tonight.
Okay, excellent. All right, moving on to item number 10. Approval of Resolution 2025-17 authorizing funding and award of contract to Michael Baker International for comprehensive update to the Carefree zoning ordinance and citizen participation ordinance. Okay. Oh, did I miss something? Okay, Stacy.
Oh, mayor, thank you. Mayor, members of town council, I'm pleased to be here this evening to present and discuss this agenda item, a very important one, comprehensive update to our zoning ordinance. I just want to give a brief overview of how we got here to this request. First being, as many of you were participants as well, are very aware that in our general plan, our recently adopted and ratified general plan, we identified as an action item, as well as updating the citizen participation ordinance, a comprehensive update to zoning as well. That translated then into our action items in the council adopted strategic plan, which, you know, guides the budget process. And so during that time, we did have a, an in-depth discussion of being staff-led versus consultant-led. And at that time, it was determined that the best approach would be consultant-led. And so as we progressed, we began, we became, it became a part of the planning division's operational budget. And we estimated about $150,000 for a timeframe of approximately 18 months, which also was adopted in the most recent budget. And so following that, we posted the RFP in early July. We carefully reviewed three submittals, and this was outlined in your reports, that we received and with the in-house selection group. And we unanimously determined that Michael Baker International would be the best consultant to lead us through this process, based on both experience and cost. And as mayor, you mentioned, MAG, quasi-governmental agency, uses consultants. It's a very common practice for most communities in Arizona to utilize a consultant. It's kind of an interesting analogy is you have a general practitioner, but you need bypass surgery. You don't go to your general practitioner doctor for bypass surgery. They know about the heart, they know about the body, they know about arteries and everything associated with that. But you go to an expert, you go to a cardiologist. And that's kind of the same analogy for us utilizing a consultant for our update for our zoning ordinance. We want the, the best experts with the most experience. We, consultants will bring an in-depth knowledge of zoning, land use, planning and regulatory frameworks. They are also up to date with the latest trends and best practices in zoning and can recommend the best current solutions that align with evolving community needs and are specific to our community or any community. Consultants provide objectivity and fresh perspectives. They have unbiased views, they're objective third-party perspectives, particularly in zoning issues, which is, needs to be sometimes looked at from the outside, and helping to avoid internal biases and political views. And I'm one of those that's just guilty about the bias. I've been using the zoning ordinance for almost 11 years. So I think it's good for all of us to learn new and think outside the box. And a consultant helps you do that. They also provide for innovative and effective solutions based on their experience with other communities and similar projects. And for example, and we'll get to Michael Baker in a little bit more detail, but they've worked with communities such as Glendale, El Mirage, they're working now with the county, Paradise Valley. So they have a vast knowledge of different types of applications. And we get to take advantage of all of the public input that they've heard from all these communities. They can provide for us all of the legal input that they've learned through all of these communities and how to apply to different types of, again, municipalities, such as us, things that have worked and things that may not work. With that said, also, they're very efficient. Consultants will, they can work with small towns that have little to no staff. You have one planner in Carefree, and that's me. But you need more, you need a deeper bench when there's complex and time-consuming processes. And that's what the zoning ordinance is. They streamline processes. They can manage the entire process, ensuring efficiency and minimizing the burden of, burden that it can be on internal, internal resources. They're versed in community engagement and facilitation. Consultants know how to effectively engage the community, hold public meetings and gather stakeholder input in a meaningful way. They're also skilled at balancing competing interests and navigating contentious zoning issues, helping to bring back consensus or reach consensus. Again, it's sort of that third-party neutrality, listening to all sides of an issue. There's the legal risks and there's the compliance considerations that are important. Zoning ordinance must comply with state and federal laws. And consultants ensure that the updates meet those current legal requirements. By hiring a professional, the town reduces its risk of legal challenges, it's never zero, or non-compliance that could arise from updating ordinances from one perspective versus other perspective. from one perspective versus other perspectives that have been valley-wide. And one example I can share is a community, not currently, but with Paradise Valley. There was a time when they were just recently updating their short-term rental ordinance that we just recently went through not too long ago. They were kind of first. Just like our community, they wanted to, you know, really be strong, really be tight, really kind of put a heavy hand to try to minimize short-term rentals. And lo and behold, their ordinance was challenged. And they lost. The attorney general ruled in favor of the operator that challenged them. They went back for a rewrite and, you know, had to be more in line with state statute. So I think having the legal perspective when we're doing a comprehensive look at updating our zoning ordinance with a consultant who has heard and seen all of these types of issues that have, that arise. And lastly, they really are cost-effective. Yes, there's a startup cost, but their understanding in the time, the research, their knowledge of the process eventually becomes more cost-effective than less. So why Michael Baker International? Well, as you know, they have a history with us. There's been prior planning efforts, all adopted by town council, and even ratified, implemented today by staff. We use those documents today. They're familiar with our local codes, land use, town dynamics. I did want to throw in that the general plan did win a local Arizona Planning Award just recently. So they're a quality consultant. They have experience. They've worked on, and are currently working on several zoning ordinance updates with a variety of communities, large and small, as I mentioned. There's continuity. They've demonstrated commitment through previous work. They're responsive to the town's needs. They provide for continuity from one phase to the next. They're easy to pick up and start. They're off and running. They don't need to get comfortable or reacquainted, or acquainted with the town, I should say. They have a local presence. I think in our proposal from them, they'll be using six team members that actually worked on the general plan update as well. They have various backgrounds and responsibilities. And they have a proven track record with us with a variety of outreach efforts, bringing groups to consensus. So with that said, I provided to you a motion, a sample motion, as you would prefer to move forward. I'm happy to answer questions as well. Matt Kleisakow from Michael Baker International is here as well, and he's happy to answer any detailed questions you may have for him also.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that very excellent presentation. Matt, would you care to say anything while you have the opportunity?
Stacy did a wonderful job.
Okay, well, it's great to see you again. So for those who don't know, Matt took care of us going through the general plan. That was quite a process, and you did a great job. You got a great product, and it passed 64 to you plus. So it was a good experience for all of us. All right, so I would open up the questions or comments from council.
Well, I have several comments. I work with the town of Paradise Valley on various residential projects. I look at our hillside or mountainside ordinance, and I look at their hillside ordinance. The more that the language becomes similar, helps architects. Hillside is very difficult to meet all of the requirements. So anything that, you know, has likeness is very helpful. You know, I think lessons learned from other communities, Scottsdale, Paradise Valley, only helps us. So there's so many things that we'd like to do, but can we enforce it? And, you know, we can hear from the consultant, you know, what the track record has been. So I think it's a, something highly needed. I look forward to participating with the consultant.
Just a couple of questions. Are we rewriting our code, or are we updating? What are we doing?
Mayor, Councilmember Roth, I think it'd be a combination of both. We won't know until we sort of get into, I would say, a review of the existing language that we have, how it aligns with current statute, state statute and other regulations. And also, as we have discussions with the public in general, trying to understand if any of our values that we regulate right now in the zoning ordinance want to remain. Do we want to tighten them? Do we want to loosen them? But overall, we will be getting a new document overall. And I think the, again, the benefit too is that whatever we maintain or rewrite as new, I think it's going to be graphically enhanced. I think it's going to become more user-friendly in terms of understanding that information. I think graphics support that. So I think it's going to be a combination of rewrite and maybe tweaking or modifying our current language.
And we are in compliance now.
We are in compliance now. I think the issue with our zoning ordinance is, and here's an example, we have lighting requirements. Our lighting requirements speak to wattages. We know that light and light sources have changed, have evolved over the last 20 years. I would say our ordinance is about 20 years old now, 21. And so I think what we're talking about is, not that it's out of compliance, but it doesn't align with what people are looking to do today and what technology and things we have out there today. So I do think that, you know, we just need to be sure that the language that we have in our ordinance aligns with current language today, whether it's regulatory or it pertains to implementation.
And also to Michael Baker, our contract for the general plan was approximately $127,000. The final payout was $174,907. Are you anticipating a similar overage for the $150,000, or is the $150,000 what we're going to pay?
Well, Mayor and Councilmember Roth, it wasn't an overrun. What had happened was the public participation component grew. We added meetings, we had a consultant time. So there was an amendment to the contract where we did approve, or council did approve additional services. And that is why that the overall contract was more than what was originally the $127,000. It might have, I think, have been $129,000. So I wouldn't characterize as an overrun. I would not like to see that happen. I think that, I think, again, with the knowledge that Michael Baker has coming in with, I think they know our community. I think they know the values. I don't anticipate that to be the case.
But it could happen.
I mean, anything can happen.
It could happen, it's possible. And so on the general plan, I mean, we could have nailed that thing down, minimized public input, and saved ourselves the delta, whatever that delta is. And from my point of view, it's just the cost of doing business. We want the public involved, okay? And we have a consultant. He did a great job. I think the public embraced Matt, for the most part. Generally, you did a great job, and the people here enjoyed working with you, and we got a good product as a result of it. So for this project, we're looking at $154,000. That's a reasonable estimate. But if we find out that there's a tremendous amount of public input, contentious issues that take multiple meetings to sort out, the meter's running. And from my perspective, it's just the cost of running the place and giving a good product. And you can shake your head no, but this is, I mean, that's what I really believe in. So hopefully it doesn't happen, but it could happen.
Well, to that point, that's what I was going to say, is with your citizen participation. I mean, I'd almost get that first, so we know kind of where we're looking at before we enter into this, because it's, I think we had those contentious issues with the general plan because of the citizen participation. They felt like they said one thing but were directed another way. So we may want to clear that up first and then go into this thing. That would be my comment.
Well, Mayor and Councilmember Johnson, I think one thing that Matt, managing his process, was very good at was giving us an understanding of if we're hitting those types of issues and how we may need to stop and rethink what, how the process is moving forward. The other thing is, the first step in this process, and similar to the general plan, is that he will be providing to us a citizen participation plan, which will, we will review, bring forward, so everybody's on the same page and has an understanding as to what time constraints, how many meetings, what the expectations are. As the mayor said, you know, I can't control the future at this point. You know, the zoning ordinance is a little different in a sense from the general plan, is that some of these things, whether we like it or not, are things that we have to incorporate into the ordinance because it's regulated at a higher level. It's more about that interpretation of it. I think the general plan being kind of more policy-based and sort of more visionary is a little bit of a different document. And so that's probably why there was a little bit, you know, and there was definitely a difference of opinions regarding some land use.
So will we have a citizen panel then?
Yeah.
And we'll get that together.
It's in the contract.
Yeah, it's all part of the citizen participation, so yes.
But I assume one of the reasons you went with them is because they did the general plan. So the estimate they would give you would be based on the knowledge of the community and how much the citizens participate. So it shouldn't be a surprise to get, so I'm assuming the 154 would hopefully be what it is, because he has gone down the road with the citizens.
Right. Mayor, Councilmember Roth, yes, I would say that, as we discuss, that his history, Michael Baker's history and understanding of the town, is what actually provides us a cost benefit. So I think Matt does understand sort of the community itself. And so I don't know if he wants to add anything to that. But I think there is an economy to that. But I would also add that, yes, that was a reason to choose them, but also ultimately, they had the lowest cost, the lowest fee, and they had the most experience.
So their bid was the lowest out of the three?
Correct.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Mayor, council. It's great to be back before you. And I enjoyed the conversation, but felt it might be worthwhile just to come up and clarify some of the points that I think Stacy did a great job in responding to. But in terms of cost and process, that's spot on, that there is going to be a citizen committee above and beyond working with the planning commission and of course, the council, as well, the public. So we're going to have a lot of layers for feedback in this. But one of the first steps in our process is do a zoning code analysis. So we go through your entire code and look at where there's places for improvement, where there might be pitfalls or considerations that the town might want to bring forward. So before we get into just start writing things and putting them out there, we're going to be analyzing the code and discussing where we see potential opportunities for adjustment. And really, it's about being surgical. You do not want to go into a zoning code and just start revising things because you think that, you know, we can update the language. If it is working, as they say, then there's no reason to go in. If it meets a legal challenge, then, and it's been applied from Stacy over the years, then there's no reason that we should be going in and tinkering with it. But there are other things that I think we can bring to the forefront based on our experience and at least give consideration so that Carefree gets the best product in the end. And that's really what I think we try to bring forward. This, just as I said on the general plan, the zoning code's not our zoning code. It's going to be Carefree zoning code. We're here to help facilitate, bring consideration to the conversation, and then let the process determine where the town wants to go. But in terms of cost, I am very adamant about being responsible to the communities we work in from a price standpoint. And Stacy was absolutely correct in the general plan. We put forward a cost that we think a project can be done on. We do not lowball something and then do change order after change order. But we are very clear in our scopes that we'll do X amount of meetings. And so as the mayor mentioned, if the public process does begin to require additional conversation that no one could anticipate, that does often cause for a change order. But Councilmember Roth, as you noted, we put a price on this based off the request from the town that we think we can do this project for that. And that's based on personally my experience, having worked in this town. So I know that there can be some maybe strong issues and opinions that we're going to have to work through. But we're going to do our best to bring good ideas to the table and hope that we are responsible with the budget in that manner. So hopefully that wasn't too long-winded, but just wanted to put everybody, if I could, at ease and offer that we want to work with the town. We kind of view ourselves as an extension of staff in these moments where you are putting these forward. And so we want to make sure that we're as efficient and responsive to residents, just as your staff is on a daily basis.
Okay, well said. Any other comments or questions from the council? Right, thank you, Matt. We have no public comment. And so with that, I would intitate a motion to approve Resolution 2025-17, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for professional services with Michael Baker International for the Carefree zoning ordinance update project.
Motion to approve Resolution 2025-17, which authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for professional services with Michael Baker International for the Carefree zoning ordinance update project.
Second.
Before we vote, any other comments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passive naturally. Thank you. Thank you, Stacy. And thank you, Matt. Look forward to working with you. Item number 11, review and discussion regarding a proposed amendment to the Carefree Arizona Code of Ordinances, Town Code, political signs 11-3-2. This is the first of two required ordinance readings. And who will manage this for us? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The intent of this update to the ordinance was specifically to adjust our code to be in alignment with the Arizona revised statutes, statute, excuse me, 161019, which establishes the standard rules for placement in public right-of-way and on private property during election season of election signs. Section 8.2 reflects that signs shall be located in the public right-of-way only during a period commencing 71 days. That's what the statute has been changed to. Ours indicates 60 days. So this changes us to be in alignment with the Arizona revised statutes. That's the intent of this ordinance change. You can see, as indicated in the ordinance, it also allows for 15 days after general election, except for a sign that someone continues on to the primary, which means signs can remain in place all the way from that 71-day period through the primary. So that's the intent of what we're doing with this change to the ordinance. There's no action required at this time because as per our code, we are required to do two readings of this ordinance. This is the first reading of the ordinance, and it will be brought back to you in November as well.
So this change, I'll just move that 60 days to 71 days.
That is correct.
And if we fail to approve it at the second reading, we'll be in noncompliance with the Arizona revised statute.
Yes, Arizona revised statute 16-1019.
Comments or questions from the council? So we have two public comments. Hearing done, right? Two comments. John Trainor, please come on up. And limit your comments to three minutes, if you would. Thank you.
It's only one page. Good evening, Mayor Crane, members of the council, residents at home and in the building. I have a short story about political signs during the 2023 property tax election season. Signs were just about everywhere, on private property, along Tom Donlington, Cave Creek Road, and Carefree Highway. There were even antics in the boulders where notable residents were removing signs that opposed the tax. Even our mayor at the time had a pro-tax sign. One day, every sign, regardless of pro or no bias, even Scottsdale signs vaporized. There were a lot of signs, so it took a while. I called Dennis, the code enforcement officer at the time, and asked if he removed them. He said he did not and didn't know who did. However, he suggested I call a guy in Scottsdale. I called that guy and asked him the obvious question. He admitted that Scottsdale removed the signs. I asked why. He said, "They violated Scottsdale." He said, "They violated Scottsdale code." I told him I reviewed the Scottsdale political sign ordinance before calling him and found no reason for the signs to be removed. His next excuse was that he viewed the signs in the median as a hazard to vehicles. He was a slow thinker. I then asked him if those flimsy signs were more of a hazard than the trees and the boulders that were in the median. He didn't remove those. Crickets to that question. Why remove signs in Carefree, then? Crickets to that question, too. He said he still had the signs in his truck and offered to return them. I later found out that he had a friend in Cave, in Carefree Town Hall. In the number of days before the election that signs can be displayed has changed. If the number of days has changed, why not just update that and correct some of the issues that the prior ordinance contained? Those conditions that were put in there at that time, I don't remember the discussions. I was here at that time, but I don't remember those discussions. I never would have agreed to something that egregious. Anyway, in 2024, 2023, and many years prior to that, there was no removal of signs in the median or any of our arterial roadways. So I have to wonder, if we're not going to enforce another ordinance, why have it? Why have those conditions in there? And I understand that the state allows municipalities to put certain restrictions. I understand that. I, I just don't understand who or why those restrictions were put in there. We don't have businesses everywhere. We certainly don't have tourists everywhere. Doesn't make sense. Yes, I read the section in the state law. I agree with it to a point. I believe if there's a, if, if it smells like a skunk, it is indeed a skunk. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, John Mattis, please come up.
I'll try and talk into the mic. I have a problem with the political sign ordinance. We have back and forth in emails. I completely disagree that the Carefree is a tourist destination, commercial or resort. There is one area that could be considered a resort, that's Savannah. There's no other resort. The boulders is Scottsdale, but apparently, things get enforced in the boulders, whether you're in Scottsdale or Carefree. The major issue that I find with this is that it is contact-based, not content neutral. Town of Gilbert lost a U.S. Supreme Court case in 2015, Reed versus Town of Gilbert on political science. Contact-based ordinance on political science. I'm requesting that the town council and the town step back from this ordinance and And I have a letter, if I could give this, I have one for everybody, to give to you. I'm not asking for a decision tonight. I know one can't be given, but I think it needs to be addressed, digested, this information, and taken. We don't need to go to the U.S. District Court on a civil rights violation, and that's what happened to the Town of Gilbert. We have to save our money for the roundabout. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Sue.
59 seconds to go. Anything else you want to talk about?
Please, if you give Kristen the sign, the latter shall distribute them for us, for you. Okay, thank you, John. Okay, so that closes the public comment. So this is, this is the first reading, and you'll be back again. So thank you. And that'll close that agenda item. We have no slips for call to the public, is that correct?
Yes, we do. On this one.
Okay.
So you have called to public. Eight.
Okay, this part. So for call to the public, those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. The public may address the council on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of an open call to the, to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who've addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, direct staff to study the matter, reschedule the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, the council may not discuss or take legal action at this time, so please leave your comments to no more than three minutes. And first up, Mr. Les Hardy. Are you here? Okay, that's easy. John Traynor.
Mayor Crane, council, residents, me again. Today is the eighth-year anniversary of Jim Van Allen's passing on October 7th, 17. Why do I bring that up? Well, I firmly believe that things in Carefree would be far different today, in a good way, if councilman Jim Van Allen had lived longer. He didn't let much about Carefree get past him. Our then-mayor and our town administrator know that very well. If, and that is a big if, the Hampton Inn was ever built here, it would look far different and more like what a hotel in the heart of Carefree should be. Jim was a hotel man through and through. He was a senior executive in the Hilton chain of hotels and brought Embassy Suites to fruition. Carefree needs more council members like Jim Van Allen. Hopefully, the 2026 election will bring that to fruition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. So that closes call to the public. We have no other slips. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, we have another slip? Okay, bring her up and give it to the clerk. Just in the nick of time. Hey, hey, John Nimskey.
Yeah, John Nimskey, PO Box 8397, Carefree. Just a couple of questions. Is the zoning, first of all, I'm talking in a way as a commissioner. We were not aware on the commission that we would be revising and hiring a consultant for the zoning ordinance. Somehow, that didn't get translated to us. So my first question is, does the zoning ordinance really need to be updated at this point? Are there that many problems with it so that we're spending the amount of money that we're spending?
Well, we can't, this is call to the public, and that agenda item has been closed, but we can talk to you afterwards, so please ask your questions.
That was my question, so I'll talk to you afterwards.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Any comment from council? So no more call to the public slips. So we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
How are you? Good. Carefree, I think, I'm sure you're good.
Good.